I will go ahead and call this council meeting to order. Karen, can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Gerard.
Councilmember Gerard, we're not hearing you.
Councilmember Gerard. Here, not too right, but here.
Councilmember Husnick.
Here.
Councilmember Munson.
Here.
Councilmember Beistrum.
Here.
And Mayor Bane.
Here. Our next agenda item is the Pledge of Allegiance. Do you all want to turn off your cameras? And Dan's got a flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Councilmember, if you have an agenda before you, I will entertain a motion to approve or any changes this evening. Mayor Bane.
No, I was just going to make a motion, but I think Councilmember Beistrum has a question.
I just, I had a question about, I think there's an issue with item 6H, is that correct?
If there's a staff recommendation that item 6H comes off, we can either take it off here or we could take it off as part of the consent agenda to table. If you'd like to make a motion to take that off now, we can do it.
Either way, I just wanted to be sure it got done.
Let's do it, let's do it now. And so I will make a motion to approve the agenda, removing consent agenda item 6H. Is there a second?
A second.
Motion and a second, Karen, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Gerard.
Aye.
Councilmember Husnick.
Aye.
Councilmember Munson.
Aye.
Councilmember Beistrum.
Aye.
Mayor Bane.
Mayor Bane, it's aye. Motion, our agenda is approved. Our next item is item five, the open forum. Dan, is there any open forum submissions this evening?
There is not any open forum submissions for tonight's meeting.
Very good, thank you. And just a note for anybody who is watching, we are still taking public comments and still holding open forums. All of that, all open forum requests can be submitted via email to be read into the public record as part of the open forum portion. And that web, or that email address is info@cityofforestlake.com. And just note in your subject line for open forums so that we know that you intend for that to be a publicly read letter. And happy to, happy to continue to take any of those submissions. Okay, with that, we have a, council, you have a consent agenda before you. Toggle my screen here, sorry. Consent agenda items six, A through G, and I, I and J. I will entertain either a motion to approve or any changes. With everything but 6H.
Mayor Bane, I'd like to pull items I and J. And with that, I'll make a motion to approve consent agenda items A through G.
Is there a second?
Council Husnick goes in second.
Motion and a second, Karen, can we have a roll call vote, please?
All right. Councilmember Gerard.
Aye.
Councilmember Husnick.
Aye.
Councilmember Munson.
Aye.
Councilmember Beistrum.
Aye.
Mayor Bane.
Aye. Moving on to our regular agenda, first item is item 6I. And 6I is the Verizon small cell wireless development agreement. And J is the co-location agreement supplement. Councilmember Bun, Beistrum?
Yeah, I was just wondering if I could get a little bit of a background on this, a little better understanding of what this is. I know that we've had some previous council conversations about some deficits in the community. And just kind of curious as to how this came to be and, and what it means for the city.
Certainly, Councilmember Beistrum, I can address that, address your questions and concerns. Verizon has wireless, has proposed three locations for a small wireless facility. Each of these are about 30 feet tall. These are meant to address broadband capacity issues in those areas. And the three locations they're now applying for are one, just directly south of Walmart on Third Avenue Southwest. Another location that is on First Avenue Northwest, basically behind Burger King. You know, adjacent to the wetland area there. And then the third one is the location on East Broadway, across from Vanelle's, also adjacent to the Park Plaza Development, which is also the location of the by-location agreement where Verizon is proposing a smart wireless facility, basically an antenna on top of the, one of the blue city-owned streetlights, you know, the historic, you know, looking streetlight. These are all, these, these have been long expected, anticipated by the city following the state statute changed that basically put a, really made it so that these type of facilities are permitted to use within city rights of way. And even specify the amount of lease rent the city could charge for that one, you know, on, on the antenna on the blue pole. The, and so in this case, the situ, Verizon wanted, instead of putting in a, submitting a $2,500 cash escrow for each of the sites, which are, which is part of the fee schedule requirement, in addition to an application fee. Verizon wanted to do a letter credit. Well, Pete will tell you, Pete, the city attorney, will tell you that to have a letter credit, you need to have a development agreement. And so that's what is, we worked out with Verizon. These three sites, you know, have been reviewed by the C Engineer and Public Works. And there's some, some considerations with one location, we, Verizon responds to city comments. But, you know, there are basically just some small engineering design issues before we get, before that full approval is offered. And the, but this is something that we've been discussing with Verizon for over two years now. And they've finally coming forward with complete applications for the city to review. And it looks like we're headed to approval with those. To answer your questions there.
And just to, and just to follow up, this isn't, this is, these are high-traffic areas. This is, this is what the problem is here. Obviously by Walmart and Burger King and Broadway, there are a lot of people, a lot of people using cell phone. They've identified those areas as places they need to supplement their, their signals and their responses. Especially with, you know, you're sitting in the parking lot of Target and your kids, they're watching video. Well, that's, that's going to, that's why they need, and same thing at the park. I mean, obviously if they're putting it by the park, there's probably a lot of traffic during there that they cannot keep up with. So these small cells are made to be almost like booster systems, to keep it simple. From the big cell towers.
If I could add a small detail on that, that the pole near the park, there's a Verizon Wireless store right around the corner. And sometimes customers weren't getting great signal, which didn't help to sell Verizon services over in the Park Plaza building there.
Very, very helpful, I appreciate that, thank you for the, kind of catching me up on that. Do we have any, have we been having any discussions about some of the other areas of the city where deficits in service are occurring?
It's my understanding we've had discussions in the past, but we, since we're not, we're not the ones in business doing, putting cell sites in, it's really up to whoever the vendor is, whether it's midco or, or Verizon or T-Mobile or whoever, to try to put that in. And until it's economically feasible for them, they're just not going to do it. So we either have to try to push them in that direction or there has to be some grant money or some kind of help from the state or, or the feds to, to give them funds to fill those gaps. And, you know, a lot of the money for, for cell sites and for broadband access go to the rural areas, but we're not rural enough now to qualify for it.
Okay. I, I know we're hearing it, or at least I am, kind of more and more from families now that we've got a lot of, you know, distance learning occurring and there's a larger strain on systems and bandwidth and that kind of thing. So, so just kind of curious, I appreciate the update on that.
I would just like to chime in, I think, I think these are important for overall service within the city, but because it's these particular, this particular solution is volume-based and it's being driven by the carriers who are, you know, making those investments. It's, it's good for overall city access in those targeted areas, but I don't see this as being the solution for some of the gaps that we've got in broadband in other parts of the community where it's more rural or just lesser serves. I think we're going to have to find other avenues for that. But this does help connectivity, certainly in those, you know, we have residents close to some of these sites that, that will also be improved or businesses that will have better service. So there is some net gain, I just don't think it's the solution for some of those other problems.
Mayor Bane.
Councilmember Gerard.
Just as an aside, Donovan can probably speak to this better than me. This has been before the planning commission numerous times, the height of these structures, where they can go. They have extensively looked at it just to make sure that it would fit with what we want to do. Because they, and Donovan, correct me if I'm wrong, they can pretty much put it in any right-of-way access that they, that they want, as long as they want it.
That, that is correct. There, there is some places where there's really congested underground utilities. And there's just not room within the right-of-way, especially in this 12th Street Southwest area. But, you know, as long as they keep below a certain height, certain cubic feet of antenna, there, it's permitted use, similar to, you know, a single-family home is permitted use in a zoning district and, and the city can say, okay, it's setbacks here or there, height. But that's, you know, there's not much, not many other much legal guidance or legal framework around where they're allowed or not allowed. In these commercial areas, I'm saying residential is a different story. It's a conditional use permit required.
Just piggyback on that, I know that this topic has consumed a lot of planning commission time and a lot of staff time. So kudos to getting it to this point. Thank you.
Mayor Bane, I'd make a motion to approve consent agenda items I and J.
I'll second, Councilmember Gerard.
Motion and a second, Karen, can we have a roll call, please?
Sorry about that, Councilmember Gerard.
Aye.
Councilmember Husnick.
Aye.
Councilmember Munson.
Aye.
Councilmember Beistrum.
Aye.
Mayor Bane.
Aye. Motion carries. Moving on to our regular agenda item, our first regular agenda item this evening is 7A, which is the Foresome Golf Management Liquor License Application. Karen, I think you're going to walk us through this.
Yeah, it's pretty basic. The reason why this came to the regular agenda is because the request is for a waiver of their fees. So Foresome Golf is the new management for the golf course that we have an agreement with. And they have applied for a 3-2 beer license. We are under the understanding that they cannot use that currently until something happens either with legislation or these restrictions are lifted. But they have applied for a license all the same. Currently with what they can, what is allowed on golf courses is a 3-2 beer license only because they don't have restaurant seating or anything like that. So there's a beer cart, my understanding is there's a beer cart out there. And a pro golf shop. So, so that's what they're allowed basically is a 3-2 beer license. The fees for that is a $500 background check through the police department and then a $200 fee for the license. Because they have an agreement with us, because it's a city-owned golf course, because at some point ultimately this money would probably go back to them anyways, the request is to waive their fees of a total of $700.
Yeah, and just for a little bit of clarification, if I may. The license, even if they're issued today, they will not be able to serve beer until, hey, they get their state license. But also with the governor's restrictions, on-premise sales and on-premise consumptions, even though it's the golf course, that would be considered not able to happen under the emergency orders. Now, we expect sometime this week, that may change with, with the rest of some of the orders, depending on what happens after May 4th. But right now, even if we gave it to them and they got it, they, they can't sell beer until that order's changed and that's clarified, so.
Any questions for staff? I had, I had one question, or maybe just a point of clarification, this is for a 3-2 license, is that right?
Correct.
Yes.
And in order for.
Sorry.
Yeah, go ahead.
I was just going to follow up, is that before the COVID-19, we did have a bill, both in the House and the Senate, that allowed them to serve beer and wine. I wouldn't expect that to see the light of day until some other session, so.
Yeah. It was just the point I wanted to make is that, and we are still pursuing, and there's an active bill out there to get them full license. But unfortunately, that does require legislative approval and I'm just not optimistic it's going to happen this session. But important to note that we're still trying to do it, so.
Right.
Any other?
No, I'm fine. No, okay.
Mayor Bane, Councilmember Husnick. Quite frankly, I think, I think what they're asking for is reasonable in light of what's going on here with the, with the COVID thing and all this other stuff. And who knows when they'll actually be able to use it and all that. And so I'm certainly in favor of going ahead, allowing them to do that. You know, to waive that fee for now.
Excellent. Do I hear a motion in there, Councilmember Husnick?
I'll make that a motion that we do approve their application for the, I guess, the beer license or liquor license, waiving the fee for this, this summer at least.
Mayor Bane, I'll second.
Is the motion and a second, any further discussion on this? I, I'll, just a quick, just a quick note, I've heard great things and appreciate that they, you know, they have moved quickly and been able to get the course open. They were open the day that the governor opened, opened the courses. And in recognition that we do have a guaranteed minimum to them at the end of the season. And so to me, it's just in our best interest that we also waive the liquor license. Because ultimately we are, you know, there is a minimum amount that the city is on the hook. So I also will support this this evening. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, Karen, can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Gerard.
Aye.
Councilmember Husnick.
Aye.
Councilmember Munson.
Aye.
Councilmember Beistrum.
Aye.
Mayor Bane.
Aye. Motion approved. Moving on to our next agenda item this evening, Highway 97 and Goodview Avenue. Ryan, this has been a big project, a long time coming, so wanted to get it on our regular agenda so we could all get an update and I'll turn it over to you.
Mayor, City Council, Ryan Goodman here, talking about the agenda item, bid results and award recommendations for the Trunk Highway 97, Goodview Avenue and A Street improvements. Obviously, this has been a very long journey and I'm finally relieved to get to this point.
Ryan? Yep. We can't hear you.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Good, perfect.
Let's just start over.
Ryan Goodman, city engineer, talk about the agenda item, bid results and award recommendations for the Trunk Highway 97 and Goodview Avenue, A Street improvements. Like I previously said, this has been a very long journey. Finally relieved to get to this point, seeking federal approval and MINDOT approval for tonight's agenda item. Obviously not an easy thing. A lot of things that went into this project, planning, public outreach, property acquisition with the school and the church. And then having to let a separate contract go just to meet the March BAT deadline that's out there for, you know, federal funding requirements and all the little, other little things that are required. It'll be the first pedestrian facilities in the state of Minnesota on the trunk highway that will have rectangular rapid flash and beacon systems at the crossings. So that was another portion of the project that took a lot of review and comments and revisions from MINDOTS. And finally, you know, incorporated into the construction agreement that we've already executed. And then here tonight, you know, you just never knew where you're going to get when all those things go into a project. But it's proud, you know, with the teamwork that was all put in and everybody involved, that the project came in under engineers' estimates. Our engineer's estimate was 3.35 million. A low bid was Forest Lake Contracting Incorporated with a bid of $3,104,036.77. Though, talking all night about this project, which you could, tell a lot of stories even already today. It's our recommendation to award the project to Forest Lake Contracting within the Resolution 0427201 in the amount of $3,104,036.77.
Very good, thank you, Ryan. Ryan, any questions for Ryan?
I just wanted to comment, Ryan, thanks again for his hard work on this project. We've been a long time, like you said before, and we needed to get this thing going and really appreciate it. Maybe we can get something safe there.
Yeah, agree. I echo, echo Councilmember Husnick's comments. And I ran through this intersection this last weekend and I'm really looking forward to having a different intersection design and something that is safer. Important to note that, you know, we still don't have the funding in place around the pedestrian facilities. And so the project we are awarding tonight does not include those pedestrian facilities. There is still an active bill on both the House and also in the Senate as part of the bonding project to fund those pedestrian facilities. You know, tough time to be asking for funding of any type, any type at this point. And I think it's a little bit of a wild card on what's going to happen with those bond funding requests, but there is still some active effort there. And if we don't get it this round, we'll certainly be back. And so ultimately, I think we, you know, we do need to support better, improved pedestrian facilities, but what we're doing today is better than the status quo. And so I feel, feel good about at least getting some of the major redesign work done and a better intersection overall.
Yeah, this will be a good first step for sure. And with that, Madam Mayor, I'd make a motion that we do adopt Resolution 04-27-20-01, awarding the contract to Forest Lake Contracting for, I think I got the number right, Is that correct?
Very good.
I'll second.
Is there a second? Motion and a second from Councilmember Gerard. Very good. Karen, can we have a roll call, please?
Mayor Bane, can I ask one question quick? When is this set to begin, Ryan? When is, when is the construction set to begin on this?
Well, within the specified contract dates, it was a June 1st start because of school.
Okay.
We've already been working with the contractor, we've had the contracts prepared. So if, let's say, everything went bad tonight, it would just been a paper loss, right? So we've already ganged a week and just getting paperwork going. And it's already to their bonding company and getting filled out. We've requested shop drawings, so we might be able to get, we have to have the pre-con to meet federal MINDOT requirements, but we, we might be able to be on site within two, two weeks. But we are going to start earlier than what's in the specified contract because school is not in session. So therefore, it won't affect school traffic and hopefully things can get done sooner, sooner than anticipably planned as well. Therefore, we don't go into the, or the start of school after the summer.
I was, I was just curious as to whether or not we had a potential opportunity to bump up that timeline a little bit, given the, the fact that we aren't going back to school this year. So that's good to hear that.
They're on it, and we have a very good contractor. They, they're very good at this type of work and coordinating stuff. This is kind of the things that they go after, these types of projects specifically.
Okay. Thank you.
Ryan, this is a huge, I'm glad this is going forward. This is going to be a huge interruption, I would assume on 97. What is our, to educate people besides just throwing the signs up one day and say, you lose?
It's a good question. So some things that we're working with Dan Undamon is the public outreach, which will be interfaced through either Facebook, Blass, and the city's webpage linked to MINDOT's project website updates as well. Just the proximity of the properties in there, we have contacts to disperse information through email or flyers as well. So there will be a combination of all that going on with the stuff on Facebook and the city's webpage that we're in the process of developing. Those will include weekly updates with MINDOT's and federal requirements, you know. Before just closing a road, we have to give advance warning on the variable message signs. So those will have to be out there and they'll have, you know, this road will be closed, said dates, you know. So there's ample warning out there. It's not like a, the flexibility that are allowed on local projects. So all that stuff goes through a process and procedure and, you know, like the public outreach, we're going digital with on this project.
Thank you.
Any other discussion?
I guess one, just one more question for Ryan would be, what's the anticipated length of that project in time?
The original completion date had everything early October, but that's like final everything. So we'll have a substantial completion date that's, you know, I can't, I should have looked that up, but that would have been in August. So we should be able to hit that if everything goes as well. So we want to be done and open to traffic prior to an open up. Now, if we're running the Mother Nature, throw some stuff at us or some other stuff, you know, once you, you go into the depths of excavation you are on this project, because it does not just include the roadwork, we are relocating a sanitary sewer trunk line and a water main. So some of that work can go on though, you know, prior to the word, or the road having road closures and stuff like that. So there will be some accesses that will be loose, especially, you know, the connection southbound A Street to, to Highway 97. But there will be detours put in place and stuff like that. But that's going to also allow us a faster construction on 97 and a lot safer work zone than what we saw over at BP Gas Station when MINDOT did that turn lane and allowed full access turning movements. You know, that's another proactive thing that we were able to do in the city and the CIP planning with the streets was all the roads around this area are done and, you know, very well easily traveled. They're not obviously allowed for trucks, there's a separate truck detour that's well outside the limits of this project. That'll take you around this intersection, other than the local construction traffic that'll be coming through here. So it's a lot of thought and planning and the staging and flagging of this project as well.
Okay, thanks a lot, Ryan. It clears up a lot of it, so thank you.
We have a motion and a second on the table. Any further discussion before we have a vote? Not seeing any, Karen, clear roll call, please.
Councilmember Gerard.
Aye.
Councilmember Husnick.
Aye.
Councilmember Munson.
Aye.
Councilmember Beistrum.
Aye.
Mayor Bane.
Aye. Motion approved. Our next item on the agenda this evening is item 7C, which is the Common Bond Parkland Dedication Fee reimbursement request. Donovan, I think you're going to walk us through this.
Yes. Mayor and council members, I'd like to present the request from Common Bond Communities, who's also represented in this call by Andy Hughes, for a 20% fee, Parkland dedication fee reimbursement. This project, if you recall, was a subject of a concept plan review for council several weeks ago. It's located just southeast of the Harvard Creek Service Center and a little bit southwest of the Transit Center, you can see the parking lot there. And so this, this is the same plan that you saw several weeks ago. And this is the plan that the Plan Commission, I'm sorry, the Parks, Trails and Lakes Commission last Tuesday reviewed. And, you know, responding to the. And, you know, responding to the request from the developer for this twenty percent fee reimbursement, which is allowed by the zoning code. It's meant to be an inclusionary housing provision. Also, you know, supplemented by the ability for a developer to request a twenty percent reimbursement on building permit fees, city sewer and water availability charges, that's the city whack and sack, and building review fee charges. And so the, at the vote last Tuesday, the Parks, Lakes and Trails Commission had a split vote three, three. And so it did not offer a recommendation of approval for this fee reimbursement. I think that there was some concern with that, you know, there's this, these funds are needed for, you know, Park, PTLC projects and current park maintenance that it, you know, wasn't, it wasn't truly needed, given the housing market was one comment. And that also there's questions on, you know, what precedent were there for offering this fee reimbursement? And this is of the, the three that I know of in the last ten years. There has been one approved and one denied. And the one denial was for Headwaters Landing Building, the Common Bond Communities also developed, which just opened this past month. And the, you know, in his presentation or his comments on, at the Parks, Trails and Lakes Commission meeting, now Andy Hughes, who I will just, quick summary there, Andy, I don't mean to speak for you. In that this was seen as something to be used for lowering the rents and is needed. They generally fill up their buildings between, takes about six to nine months to fill up a building. They expect Headwaters Landing to be occupied fully within about a month. And so he was recognizing a need. Also, I was, I've summarized some of the other housing data in the staff memo for council for this agenda item. And, you know, looking at some of the data, that's COSAR data through Met Council, showing that there's been a rent increase of about three percent from June twenty eighteen to twenty nineteen. A vacancy rate of about seven to eight percent, I'm sorry, three point nine percent, which is about half of what kind of a healthy vacancy rate is. And then I've also pulled from some information from a twenty sixteen Washington County Housing Study that talked about, you know, needs for, you know, market demand by twenty thirty for different types of housing. And, you know, just seeing this and this staff recommendation is to grant this twenty percent fee reimbursement, which would result in a payment of a hundred and six thousand dollars from Common Bond Communities for a fifty-three unit building rather than a hundred and thirty-two thousand five hundred fee for the full, for the full Parkland dedication fee. And at this point, I'm happy to gain questions from council.
Questions from council, Councilmember Munson?
Hi Donovan, I just had a quick question. You just said it, but so they're asking for not an elimination, but a reduction.
Yep, certainly. Yeah, they're still, they still, code requires them to pay a park dedication fee. And this would be over a hundred thousand dollars, a hundred and six thousand to be exact, instead of a hundred and thirty-two five hundred.
Donovan, I have a question. Maybe this goes to the project team as well. I'm happy to entertain a response from either. This, there was a similar project that was done by this project team and was it twenty eighteen? Is that when that was approved? And the similar request was denied. Is there anything that's substantial of material difference that should be pointed out from a policy decision on making this decision that council should consider in this project versus the last one?
I, there's some, I think there's one straight structural difference that I think is significant regarding the, and perhaps if I'm wrong, someone correct me. I don't see Jamie on the call, but I believe that the Headwaters Park dedication debt, Fenway Fields, I mean, has been retired and that was a big driver of the need for cash, you know, accepting the fee in lieu of land dedication for several years, as well as I think, you know, different policy approach by previous council. But I'm told that that debt has been retired and so the need for the, you know, you know, the funds to close that debt are no longer there.
Councilmember Beistrum?
I think I was at the Parks, Lakes and Trails Commission meeting and I, some of the arguments there was around some uncertainty with the, the Castlewood project, for example, that we've taken on. And some other larger projects that are kind of in the queue. Belts Park being one of them and needing to generate as much revenue as possible in order to be able to cover some of those, you know, costs that are on the horizon and to potentially plan for some uncertainties, both where Fenway Fields are concerned and where the Castlewood Golf Course is concerned. So I think those, those were the, you know, pretty major con items on the list of the folks that really weren't in support of the reduction.
Thank you. Other questions, comments?
Yeah, Mayor Bain, Councilhusnick. I did talk to one of the people on the park board and they were very adamant about the fact that, you know, to not move ahead with this reduction, you know, because it really kind of set the precedent. That was one of the problems. But still, you know, the most pressure on our, our system, our park system and our playgrounds and so forth and so on are going to come from high jet to be housing. It sounds to me like it'd be pretty plain. And so personally, after looking at this thing and thinking about it for quite some time, that I wouldn't be able to support the reduction in the park fees. I just don't think it's fair on this particular situation. So that's the only comment I want to make on it.
I guess I'll chime in here and kind of echo some of the concerns Councilmember Husnick just mentioned. And it lines up a little bit with Councilmember Beistrum's comments on what was made from the Parks, Lakes and Trails Commission. Certainly, this is an important project and, you know, we, as a council, supported a tremendous amount of support for the project overall in our last meeting and the approval or the discussion of the concept design. We didn't, it wasn't an approval, I should be clear, be clear. But when it comes to funding parks and trails, we have one source of revenue and it is this. And for everything that we deny, it's a missed opportunity to fund that source of revenue. And that's from a policy perspective. We currently, you know, certainly council could make a decision in the future to fund those items and those purchases with some general fund support. However, I am concerned with current economic environment that we, that is not going to be a hurdle we're going to be able to tackle this year or in the foreseeable future. And so essentially, we are limiting ourselves and making that fee reduction. And so if it wasn't a good time to do it in twenty eighteen for all of the reasons that were expressed then, I kind of double down on that position now just because we're in an even tougher economic situation now. And this is multifamily housing that does have a need for parks and recreation and those things are important. And we need to continue to deliver. So I appreciate the conversation that Parks, Lakes and Trails had on this and I also got a summary of that conversation. A lot of great points made, but I would struggle to support a reduction at this time.
Mayor Bain?
Councilmember Gerard?
So not to move this aside, but are we reducing the other fees, the building fees and whatnot as a city? Or has that not been decided yet? I'd like to know that.
So that I believe is, I'm sorry, Councilmember?
Yeah.
If I could, if I could jump in here. The, that is, those, the building review fee, the sewer and water availability charge and, you know, basically the SAC charge is determined by Met Council, you know, deep into the building design and building permit application review phase. So those fees are not part of this request and they're really not known. They are substantial for a building of this size. And since the fee schedule was changed recently to actually capture more, some more of the, you know, financial impact on the city from higher density residential. So, but this is simply for the, this request is simply for the park dedication fee reimbursement.
Yeah, just a clarification, those fees were raised to support the water sewer infrastructures and not park infrastructure.
Correct.
That is correct.
So Mayor Bain, my comment would be, you know, these projects are, with the Common Bond and other or income properties, that they're really hard to construct because they're, cost a lot more than they can get for rent. So I think there's a little pain by all, that is my opinion. And in this case, I hate to do it to the park board because I know they're strapped, but I would be in favor of reducing the fees.
Good perspective. Other comments? Councilmember Beistrum?
Yeah, I, boy, this one, this has been a tough one for me because I know Common Bond does great work. You know, I tend to really support nonprofits and I understand the benefit of in-kind contributions on the part of the city. For example, they may be able to leverage that for some additional funding, you know, that kind of thing. You know, which, which may in turn come back and benefit the community or the facility in some way, shape or form as well. My, my piece as I, as I'm just thinking about this, and again, this one is a little tough, it tugs at my heartstrings a little bit. But I, for me, I think it's coming down to some of the financial uncertainties. Not only Parks, Trails and Lakes Commission is maybe realizing and some of the added expenses they may be realizing this year, but just the financial uncertainties for us in this economic downturn and just not clearly understanding, you know, what, what that's going to mean for us over the long term. And so I guess in my opinion, I have to just kind of take the conservative route here and say, you know, this time out, maybe, maybe a few months from now, I might be able to revisit this, but the vote's tonight. And I'm just feeling like I'm not in a position to be able to support the reduction.
Councilmember Munson?
Mayor Bain, I just wanted to just throw my two cents into, typically, I probably pre-COVID time would vote or be in favor of the reduction. But I worry echoing a lot of the same comments that I've made about what's going to happen to our housing market. You know, I'm thinking about the strategic plan that we did, which is on the agenda tonight to update. And a lot of interest in the parks and I know the Belts Park project. So I would have, this is really hard, not support it tonight. I have to chime in now because I am hearing and I appreciate that part of the conversation from Parks, Lakes and Trails was around the additional expenses that the city might be considering as part of the golf course. But I have to make a point that I don't want this to be about golf and affordable housing and which wins. In my mind, I'm taking this perspective, kind of golf aside. I've been pushing for golf to be as self-sustaining as possible in the long term. And I think we have some short-term challenges to that, but long-term, we need to find a self-sustaining model for golf. And so I don't want there to be a perspective that we are doing this, you know, detriment to affordable housing in favor of golf. To me, it's more of the broader parks system and just recognition that we have a lot of need in that broader parks system that's driving as much as my decision. And timing wise, yes, there's a short-term conversation around golf, but it is connectivity of trails as well as golf too. So I just want that to be clear. And I hadn't thought about those points until I'm kind of connecting the dots here in the conversation. Councilmember Beistrum?
And I don't, I don't get the sense that was the perspective and either or.
Okay.
You know, I, I think it's, I think they were just trying to be, trying to consider the big picture and be responsible in terms of some of those financial uncertainties. And maybe a different day, there would have been different considerations, just not, just not knowing what the future's, you know, future is going to bring and a lot of products or projects, you know, kind of in the queue for them as well. And it wasn't just the golf course, it was uncertainties with expenditures with FLA, for example, and maybe potentially no revenue coming in there either, you know. So, you know, so I think it was a much bigger picture than golf versus a reduction in fees. I just really need to, I really need to dig my heels in on that one.
Okay, no, go ahead. I just wanted to be clear. It wasn't any.
Yeah.
Any other questions or comments? We have a request and a recommendation from staff on the table. Councilmember Husnick?
I, excuse me. If you're looking for a motion, Mayor Bain, I would make a motion that we deny the request for the reduction in the fees, for the park fees.
There's a motion to deny. Is there a second?
One, I just got to ask a quick question. Is said discussion, is it discussion only or can we actually vote on this?
Thank you for clarifying. Donovan, are you looking for a vote tonight?
No, this is a regular agenda item that needs to be voted on.
Okay, because it's under section eight, which just said discussion. I just wanted to clarify that. So my motion stands then, okay?
There's a motion to deny. Is there a second to that motion?
Oh, excuse me. I was on, I was on the wrong line. This, we're back to the Common Bond. My motion stands. It had nothing to do with discussion. Sorry about that. I was looking at the wrong thing. So we're good.
No worries. There's a motion. Is there a second? I'll second the motion. Any further discussion? Karen, can we have a roll call, please?
I'm sorry, I didn't get the second. Is that you, Mayor?
Me, correct.
Councilmember Gerard?
No.
Councilmember Husnick?
Aye.
Councilmember Munson?
Aye.
Councilmember Beistrum?
Aye.
Mayor Bain?
Aye. And the motion to deny carries. Thank you, everybody. Moving on, that wraps up the end of our action items for this evening. We're moving into a discussion-only portion of the agenda. And Jamie, I believe you're going to give us an update on Parks, Lakes and, or I'm sorry, give us an update on Parks, Lakes and Trails related to arts in the park.
Yes. Good evening, Mayor and council members. I'm here tonight for just a brief discussion on Arts in the Park for this upcoming season. So before I turn it over to council, just want to provide a few comments and notes for you here. Last Tuesday, the Trails and Lakes Commission discussed this Arts in the Park for twenty twenty, whether or not we can move forward with our season in light of all of the ever-changing situation with COVID nineteen. So at the meeting last Tuesday, I did recommend that we postpone for the month of June and wait for some further updates from the state level. The Parks Commission did table that item last Tuesday and wanted to, more information from the state and they did request some information and direction from city council. So that's why we're here tonight. Since our meeting last Tuesday, Governor Walz did provide an update last Thursday. And I don't know if you've seen that, but he shared some different techniques in opening up the state again. He provided- He provided some, some dials that he'll slowly start, um, turning to different elements as he sees necessary. So there is a social distance, or a so, social gatherings dial, which is currently set at the stay-at-home, um, stay-at-home order. Sporting venues and concerts are the last on the dial. And he did speak a little bit of that, you know, those are going to be the last things that we're going to see to open up, um, back in Minnesota here. So, um, we also, since we last met, we have seen Stillwater, they've canceled all of their large events. And so Lumberjack Days and some other concerts through July 19th at this time. We've seen a variety, we've seen some communities are waiting to decide. Some communities are making that decision now, um, based on when a contract that approaching some of the sponsorship or financial elements that they may be up against. So it's really, there's really no right or wrong, um, way about this. It's really just up to each city and how you want to move forward and navigate this. So I just want to make one other point of clarification. Our Arts in the Park event, um, it has the concert series with food trucks, art, arts and crafts vendors. And we also have a farmer's market as part of that. Farmers markets are considered essential right now and they can be done safely. So we are, the Parks Commission is in favor of, um, in support of continuing with our Forest Lake Farmers Market. However, this would be separate from Arts in the Park and likely, you know, so we can space things out a little bit. So it'd look very different, but the farmer's market portion, we are in favor of moving forward. It's more of in lines with the concert series, hundreds of people at the park and just looking for some input on if it's something that, you know, what the council would like to see happen. So with that, if there's any questions, otherwise just looking for a little discussion, input, direction to, to Parks, Trails and Lakes Commission. They are prepared, um, with a special meeting, um, a date to be set once we get some council feedback and some direction from Governor Walz. So with that, I'll turn it over to the, the council.
Questions or thoughts for Jamie? Maybe let's start with some, any quick questions, clarifying questions before we have discussion? Any clarifying questions out there? Councilmember Gerard?
Jamie, with all of the entertainment and everything, have we booked events? Are we on the hook for various acts that would perform or any other fees? Are they, um, where, where do we sit with all of that part?
Good question. Right as the COVID-19 pandemic was just starting to come out, um, all of, we have not signed any contracts yet with any entertainment, like, um, any of the entertainment groups for the year. So we are not held contractually there. The only contract we have signed was, is with, um, our music promoter, Mr. McBride. And, um, so there's just a small financial commitment there. For a lot of the work, he's really already done with scheduling and some coordinating, talent purchasing. So that's our only current contractual obligation at this time.
Councilmember Beistrum, I think you had a question?
Um, yeah, I, I just, is, is this something, um, Jamie, that we can just kind of take incrementally? I, you know, there's just so much we don't know. We're learning new things about how this virus behaves every day. And, you know, I think if you had to make a decision based on current state, we probably, you know, for the entire summer, we probably have to make a, a, a pretty tough decision. But, um, I, I tend to want to take a little bit more of an incremental approach to this. You know, I know that they're, they're thinking peak probably around late May, June sometime. Are we able to just take a look at June for now, for example, and reevaluate July, August later? Maybe push some things out till fall, potentially?
Yes, I, I think so. I've talked to our music promoter, Mr. McBride. He does manage other concert series. Um, nobody has officially canceled the whole series yet. You know, you've seen ticketed concerts being canceled, um, those are indoor venues. But a lot of those outdoor open space venues are still, um, kind of lingering yet as to, you know, hopeful, I guess, is the word. Hopeful that something can be done. You know, Governor Walz is really looking at how things can be done safely with predictable environments. I think there's, you know, other communities across the, the country are all figuring out, how can we still put these, you know, fun community events together, maybe midsummer or late, you know, or in the fall. So what he's seen so far is that June has really been, the, the June schedule has been moved to September. So other communities are booking out September instead of June, um, kind of keeping that hope alive that maybe July could work for, you know, if, if it's allowed at the state level. And if there's a way to, to take some time to figure out, how can we do this safely with social distancing requirements and everything else in place?
One of the questions for Jamie, one of the, um, one of the points that came up, I know as part of the Stillwater conversation, that really was the kind of impetus for them to make the decision last week, like they did, was that they had some, you know, dates and some, some planning lead time that needed to be done. Um, and they felt like they needed to make a decision to, um, kind of make a good contract decision. Do we have a, to, to, to councilmember Beistrum's point on doing incremental, do we have some need to make a decision dates identified of, you know, is, is the June timeline here, is it this week? Or do you have an idea on when we, you know, what a kind of a drop dead date might be? It was a terrible phrase to use for this pandemic, but a, a, a final date of when we need to make a decision, help me out here.
Yeah, no, that's a good question. And I think it's a, it's difficult to answer because things are changing daily. And so I think it's really going to come down to, um, I've put everything on hold and in light of this, just to kind of wait and see with, what direction we need to go. Um, I'm prepared this week to, um, continue talking with our music promoter, Mr. McBride. He seems optimistic that we could still get, you know, venues lined up. Some things may have changed, um, over the course of the last month if somebody's deciding not to participate or not. It would, I think, require a quick contract update with our entertainment, um, entertainment musical acts, so that we have some language in there to protect us if there is no arts in the park. So I, I don't think there's a drop dead deadline, but I think we're, we're kind of reaching that point where we should probably make a decision soon here on at least month of June. The biggest thing I think is, um, you know, you have the entertainment piece and you have all of the vendors that participate in the event. And I think that's the, logistically, the, the more challenging piece to this. You know, are they able to participate and they pay a vendor fee? And is it going to be the full month or, you know, the whole season? Or are they just going to get two months of that? And there's a lot of uncertainty there, so I don't know what level of vendor participation we're going to get. So I would say I would like to, you know, within the next week or so, it'd be helpful to at least make a decision on the month of June so we can start, um, moving forward with our plans.
Mayor Bean?
I'm just, yeah.
Just a point of clarification, Jamie. So you're looking tonight, are you looking for us? I mean, I know we're not voting, but just to give you some guidance on putting June on hold, um, or the whole thing? Because I will tell you right now, I think we have to put June on hold. I don't think we need to cancel all of it at this point. I think we can take a wait-and-see approach. What I'm working on is every day in my day job and I, I just don't see how we can do it for June.
I think that's, that's definitely helpful. I think there was some hesitation from the, the Parks Commission to postpone the month of June, thinking that it might be a little early. So I think, you know, that statement tonight is very helpful to guide them in how we move forward.
Councilmember Beistrum?
I would echo, uh, councilmember Munson's, um, recommendation that we postpone the month, month of June. If we can bump it out to the fall, that'd be great. Just keep hoping that we, as we increase testing and better understand transmission, you know, we'll be able to, um, implement best practices that will allow us to get, you know, to get this done, you know, later on in the summer. But just, I, I'm immersed in it as well. And when I see the projected timelines, um, I, I just don't think June is feasible at all.
Yeah, councilmember, go ahead. Councilmember Gerard?
I, I would concur, uh, that we should push June out and cancel it or move it to September. I'm, I'm hopeful that we'll be able to get some this summer, but, um, the news just seems to be continuously dismal about group events. At this, I think June is very, I'm very comfortable with June.
Very good. Councilmember Husnick, any thoughts?
You know what, I, I really have to agree with what I'm hearing so far on this. Uh, you know, all the news is every day, it's, it's never good news. And, and I don't see anything happening in June that we could, you know, that would clear this up. And I, I think pushing it out is the right, right decision, so. I do.
Yeah, I.
So that'd be my agreement.
I, yeah, I, I agree as well. I think, um, you know, you look at where we are today here on April 27th and you project where we're going to be in, you know, five to six short weeks. We are hopefully still in the process of, you know, opening up some business and learning and kind of adjusting to some of those essential services that are starting to open up again. And if we're able to do that, you're, there's areas where you, you know, take some change and you take some risk. And to me, a concert series is lovely, but just not an area where you take the risk. And I think June is, um, June is too early and, um, every week we learn more and, um, but also recognize it's easy for us to say, well, just make it happen, um, and do it, do so on short notice. And I think when we do those things, we also short-change the event and short-change, you know, how much time it takes from staff to put these pieces together. And there's a lot of coordination that goes into arts in the park. So I'd rather make the call and have a clear decision, um, than, you know, kind of this, are we, are we not recognizing we're, we're going to have a lot of that in our lives? And, um, for this, you know, for this point, maybe we reconsider for July as we learn more.
Perfect. Well, I appreciate the feedback. Um, I would expect to connect with the Parks, Trails and Lakes Commission soon and we'll, um, kind of, you know, share your information. And, um, you'll, I'm sure you'll hear more on this as we continue to navigate this and see what, what happens. Start planning as if we can, can have this, um, for July and August and possibly September. So thank you.
Yeah, I, one other, one other thing as we start considering what we're doing in line with what other communities are doing, to the, to some degree, to the extent that we are the only, to the extent that we are opening up and doing activities and other communities aren't, that just makes us even more of a destination and makes some of those events even bigger, which also is concerning to me. Um, it's, you lose control and you lose the ability to keep a small, a smaller group. And I think smaller groups is going to be the, kind of what we're after here for the foreseeable future.
Sounds good.
Uh, I, I do think that there will be, um, so if, if we're considering this, I do think that some communication specifically around essential services and farmers markets and being clear on what's allowed, what, just to set expectations of what those events are going to be, I think is also important. People see it as one event, um, and so to have some elements there and some elements not, I think some advanced, um, communication will do a lot in setting expectations.
Sounds good. We'll get some, we'll get some information out on that.
Very good. Jamie, anything else you need from us on this topic or council, anything else to add?
I'm good. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Very good. Okay, our next agenda item is 8B, the strategic plan update. Patrick, you're going to walk us through this?
Sure, uh, well, it seems like, uh, years ago, we went through this the first time. But we tried to update the strategic plan based on some of the comments that the council gave, uh, that night, particularly in the Parks, Lakes and Trails area. Uh, we added, I think, four different objective items. So I thought we'd go through, uh, hopefully you've gone through those. And I, I'd like to just kind of go through, um, some of those changes, but also give you an update on where we've been on some of these. I sent you an email late today. I don't know if anyone got a chance to look at that. But I just thought those were the notes I was going to go over tonight, uh, so you could have them if you wanted them. Basically, the plan pretty much stays the same. We've, uh, with the number one, we've changed obviously the challenge to objectives, as I think was the base last time. And that really has to do with, uh, developing a capital improvement, ten-year plan, financial plan, and giving us an idea of where we're going to go with that, how we're going to go forward with our streets, with our water, with our sewer, and eventually where the parks are, since parks were such a big comment tonight. Eventually, we have to include some, uh, infrastructure improvements, um, additions to parkland and then figure out how to fund it. I think that's one of the big missing pieces that we have. And, and to be honest with you, I don't think impact fees are going to cover all of that in the long run anyways. So we'll have to have a strategy for that as well. What we've done so far on this, and, and again, we will include this when we do our quarterly updates and the financials, but I thought I'd give it to you now. We have met with elders over the phone, uh, to talk about what they would need to have to put a plan together, at least to begin to start a plan, and what kind of information they were looking for. The council approved a fee for elders to do this and they have started on this. So we have provided them already with some capital plan, capital equipment information regarding the general fund needs, water, sewer, streets. So they've got at least a full picture of a lot of the infrastructure needs that we have, uh, based on some of the, uh, spreadsheets that Ryan and Dave and others have done in the past and had already updated. So we probably will be talking to them shortly about starting to put that together. So that is on the move already, uh, which I think is a good thing. We hope to get that done by the end of the year. Again, um, depending on how fast they can go, uh, we'll see how that turns out. With parks, like, like, lakes and trails, like I said, we expanded that to, to improve, uh, you know, to add our, uh, to an inventory review, rating of our infrastructure. We've added a, a review of staffing. I think that's, um, one of the things we have to look at and it'll come up again in communications is, is staffing on both of those areas. Part of the problem we've had with, uh, the staffing is we weren't sure where the Castlewood was going to go. So when we get to communications in this, we were going to split that between the two, some recreation duties, some communication duties. But there was a point in time in the spring, we thought we were going to have to run a golf course ourselves. And that person was probably going to be more dedicated to run a golf course than it was to communicate time. So, uh, we're going to read, go back there, readjust the, the job description to tailor it more back to a combination of recreation and communications. We have, uh, we haven't gotten too far in most of these at all yet. That, some of these dates are pretty long out, but, uh, Jamie and myself, and mostly we've been involved in the Castlewood Golf Course and the FLLA that has been taking most of the FLLA agreement, which has been taking most of the attention. But we will concentrate back on that, uh, now that most of that's settled down. And we might have June with no events, so we might have some time to start to pick up on some of that, that, those duties. Community outreach, again, it goes back to what I just said about we, we need to revisit this. We will start to try to, like I said, redo the job description again to, to emphasize back more on the communications. And we'll get that advertised. We don't know how many people are applying for jobs right now or how many not. I think there might be a lot of people right now out there looking for a job, so maybe we'll get a good candidate there. Uh, again, this has suffered somewhat from the, from the Castlewood Golf Course, uh, from FLLA because, uh, like I said earlier, we've had to, we were thinking that person was going to have to be a golf specialist instead of a communication specialist. So, um, we'll get back to that shortly. And then finally, where that we've made the most progress and most of that's through the EDA and Dan is, is the, uh, downtown and, downtown and business approach to, to the city. So, um, we've already created a, um, Invest in Forest Lake website. Uh, the downtown committee has formed, although it hasn't met because of the COVID-19. Uh, we've had much activity with Washington County and the grant and working with Chris, uh, and helping us, uh, get this all centered. We've been open to business. Uh, you have the presentation, we gave the EDA presentation of the Humphrey Study and what that said. And most importantly, we've made some decisions, the council made some decisions on keeping the headwaters site together, giving it to a new broker that's more aggressively, uh, marketing that. And we're not going to break that up, no matter right now what anybody offers us yet. We're just waiting for the right offer. Again, I think everything seems to be a little bit on hold on that, uh, as we, as we go through that. So that's a real quick update. I don't want to take too much time. If you have more comments of what you want to see added to this or changed, I'd be happy to take more notes and, and revise that. I'd be happy to take more notes and, and revise that and bring it back to you.
Thanks, Patrick. Councilmembers, comments, thoughts, questions? Councilmember Bystrom?
Um, just, just a question, Administrator Casey, on, uh, the, provide a clear vision for city of Forest Lake Parks, Trails, Recreation System and Facilities item, is there a reason why we aren't calling out lakes there too?
Uh, it's probably just a wordsmithing at that point.
Okay.
It should be, it should be lakes. Let me just get back to that one.
Okay. Just, I just thought in alignment with our commission.
Yeah, no, lakes definitely should be in there.
Okay.
Councilmember Gerard?
Patrick, you know, um, the strategic plan is very important. And I notice that a lot of these dates now with the whole COVID thing are gonna go out the window. Do you, do you see a reset on some of these dates? Maybe in the early fall, I kind of get a little more realistic when we think we'll be able to execute some of these?
Yeah, I, I definitely think there'll be some reset on this. I, I'm hoping that, you know, I think objective four with the downtown and, and the business community is well on its way. And I'm hoping that the objective number one, which is the, uh, strategic 10-year plan is on the way. But until, until we figure out where we're going to end up here, there'll be a reset. I, I'm not going to try to delay it as long as, you know, I try to get it done as soon as possible. But I think we'll revisit all these dates come budget time again sometime in July and August and see, and hopefully most of this COVID-19 stuff will be over and we'll focus back on what we have to do. Uh, one of the important parts of, of this plan is particularly in, in the parks, lakes and trail is to begin to, um, engage the Park and Lakes and Trails Commission more actively in this and have them more become a, a, um, a backer or a champion of, of Parks, Lakes and Trails. And really walk them through what kind of vision they're looking for. Cause I think we're, not critical, I just don't think there's a vision out there coming out of Parks, Lakes and Trails. I think they, they think about it, but I don't think we've got our hands around what really anybody wants. So they'll be, I'm a little long-winded, but there'll be a reset on, on some of these.
I'll piggyback on your comment just specific around Parks, Lakes and Trails. I also think that they haven't been given the runway to do that. Um, and I think that they would welcome, welcome that opportunity to, you know, kind of have a, kind of reset the deck a bit. Um, they've been working on some very large projects for a period of time. Um, but I think the opportunity to reset the deck and revision what some of that is, um, what they'd like to see, I think would be, it's well timed. I, I would imagine they would welcome that opportunity. Councilmember Bystrom?
I would echo that. I think they certainly have the skillset to do it. Um, and it would be, I think, uh, that, that bigger visionary project would be a great, um, I think, I think if it landed there, they'd do an outstanding job with it.
Yeah, I, I agree. I think if they, I think they, I don't know if they've, I don't know how to, uh, have had that permission before. Maybe that's not the right word, but I think with, with the, with the council saying, okay, do it. Or at least our discussion tonight saying, yeah, you should be the ones that are the advocates for the parks. What's your vision? And then putting that vision together and presenting it somewhere in the future, yeah.
I think also us coming to the table with that 10-year plan in mind is always, that's always been one of the missing links. And so if we are committed to, um, help connect the dots there between plan, vision, financial, um, support, then we can, you know, have a, a solid plan that everyone's able to kind of wrap their arms around it.
Yeah, and one thing that.
Also a key input that's been missing.
And one thing that the, the Parks, Lakes and Trails objectives taken into account is that we may have to present the council with the 10-year plan that doesn't have the parks and trails yet. That's going to have to be probably a later piece because I think we need to do some needs assessments and then some planning because, um, that's, that's a few years in itself is to get a needs assessment and then an inventory and get that all together and then merge that into the 10-year plan. If the 10-year plan is done well, we can reserve a spot for the parks, lakes and trails. How we do that, and that's, that's something that we'll have to speak with elders about is how we integrate that once that's ready. But that's going to be later than the financial kind of regular infrastructure of streets and roads and lights and whatever else.
I have questions, comments about the strategic plan. It weighs on me that I don't think we formally have adopted this, um, like any plan. As soon as you, um, put the stake in the ground, of course, situations change. I would advocate that we, um, bring this back at our next meeting for, um, council adoption, consideration, and hopefully adoption, um, recognizing that, you know, we are going to have some dates that move and we've got a great opportunity here during budget season to update those. I do like, Patrick, I, you know, I, I think we're, we're due for adoption because what I sense is that we're already working to the plan. And, you know, in your update today, we, you know, there's, there's already been some first quarter, um, movement, which is great, and we're into the second quarter now. So let's get it formally adapted and then it becomes a working document that we are discussing, you know, quarterly and certainly weighing in on during budget season.
I agree.
I guess council between now and that, now and our next meeting, that another opportunity to take a fresh read and compare it against your notes and visions and anything that is, um, you know, missing or needing to be tweaked. Now is kind of a great opportunity to get those final edits in. Um, otherwise I'd be looking to bring this back at our next meeting for consideration.
Please do. If you have any comments, please let me have them.
Anything else related to the plan tonight? Not hearing anything. Um, our next item on the agenda this evening, discussion only, talking about a housing study, Patrick?
Yeah, I'll, I'll turn this over to Donovan in a minute. But I think at the last meeting or, or we, there was a mention of, uh, housing and where we're at with multifamily units, particularly apartment buildings. I mean, when we talk about multifamily units, I think the talk out there is the number of apartment buildings, not so much the structure of multifamily units, which could be duplexes, quads. It's really the apartment building. So, uh, I've asked Donovan to start to take a look at that. He's got some information. We need a little bit of your feedback and how we want to move forward. But I think we, we are starting to look at that and that's going to be, I would recommend that that be eventually referred to the Plan Commission as one of their work, works to do. Um, and, and shepherd that through until they can report. But I'll hand it to Donovan and let him speak.
Thank you, Pat. Mayor members of council, yes, ma'am.
No, I, Donovan, kick us off.
Okay, thanks. Um, Mayor members of council like to present some, 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 um, things that I've pulled together from the comp plan regarding, um, the housing stock. And this is meant to just provide kind of a basis of information on what we now, um, look at, um, when we say housing in Forest Lake. Um, and also kind of, you know, confirm some of the things. For instance, there's the perception that, um, there've been, you know, pretty much a disproportionate number of multiple family units built recently in comparison to single family. And basically it's almost a complete reversal from what we have with our current housing stock. Um, I noted this in that common bond staff memo that, uh, you know, over the last four years, basically there were, of all the approved building permits, you know, 76% of the units were for a multiple family versus something the low 20% for single family with the remainders with some, some quads were, were built. Um, as shown in the, the slide in front of you, um, that essentially that, you know, if you add in blue, which is the single family units, look at it for instance, data from 2016.
I'm done.
Um, basically, um, the, uh, 79% of the units were single family and 17 were multiple family. You know, that's, so that's existing housing stock. And that single family is both the detached, single family and also attached. The, uh, you know, townhomes with that, that's that kind of the, um, that brown column there. So, and that's of the about 8,100, um, you know, housing units currently with our, within our, you know, 20,000 plus population. The, um, a big piece of what the, um, you're looking at just housing um, in the city is what can residents afford? Um, and this is something that's, you know, I don't mean this as a, uh, providing information here. And, and I know that the, you know, there's a council vote tonight regarding affordable housing. I'm not trying to be dismissive of that, but they're, they're looking at the, um, the, uh, you know, what we have for just income and just housing affordability. Um, you know, there is, there's need for affordable units within the city. And looking at just the, over the last, you know, since basically 30 years, um, that the median household income has not increased, um, within the city. And basically this, you know, 1990 green column, you know, if kept with inflation, it would be basically double, you know, for non, non-adjusted dollars in 2020. And that, you know, the Forest Lake has one of the lowest household income, you know, median household incomes in Washington County. The, um, then for the future, we're looking at, you know, approximately about 50% more, households, uh, by 2040. You know, again, this is from the comp plan. And, uh, and this is at the same time that we're seeing that average household size is decreasing. Um, people have fewer childrens, uh, they're more single person household persons. Um, and also, um, you know, older, older residents are, um, moving out, you know, and seeking their own, um, their own, you know, their own dwelling units. Um, and so they're just, they're seeing, you know, over, you know, number of years is that decreasing household size. And this is, you know, a nationwide trend. And then in 2017, um, there, there's a city community survey. And so residents are asked, you know, where, where, where do you see a housing gap? You know, I think in some cases, most people are thinking of where they like to live, um, if they're doing a transition to different housing. And, um, and the majority, you know, I'll say plurality, were for single family homes, either rented or owned. And, um, and then you have, you know, also cluster open space development, another single family type. And so you have, um, you know, and then you have the also rented townhomes. So you have somewhere in that 70% range, you're pretty similar to what the housing stock is now. It's, you know, for a single family. If you add those, and of course this adds up to more than 100%. And you have people looking for different types, some that don't exist currently. You know, the, the mother-in-law suite or the granny flat, about 20% indicating a preference for that. Or, you know, a large, again, a similar percentage for the senior living or assisted living. So there is, um, quite a, you know, and these aren't, um, you know, housing types that really are, are at that kind of percentage within our, you know, city currently. And that's one of the reasons, um, you know, a housing study is, is done. It's to identify future housing needs for a community and look at what kind of unit types do people want? What will the market provide? Um, looking into local demographics. Like also looking at housing affordability. Um, you know, looking at maybe, uh, you know, at some point, you know, the council did include that inclusion, inclusionary housing provision in the zoning code. Um, are there other ways to promote housing affordability? Or is it also related to just the life cycle housing? Um, people who want to remain living in Forest Lake and they're moving out of the home that they raised the family in? And, you know, is there a suitable place that, that still meets their needs within the city? Um, so it's often referred to as life cycle housing. Then also needed, it, you know, a housing study is done to identify, you know, maybe a rental code or a housing code is needed, you know, to address housing maintenance issues. Uh, or else, um, perhaps there's enforcement issues. And, uh, so again, these are, you know, potential issues to explore or to simply address, identify. And then finally, um, looking at, you know, collecting data. Um, what does the empirical data show, um, with the city's housing? Or even, you know, surveying, you know, what's the community perspective on accessory units? Or identifying regulatory barriers to development? Um, this is on, you know, these are some of the conversations that have been, that council has engaged in. You know, we'd had a couple of development roundtables. Um, and, but, you know, this is just kind of a summary of where the city is with housing. You know, this is all the information from our, our newly adopted comp plan. And, but I also wanted to then hear from council on, when you think about a housing study and look at what, you know, with multiple family units or your concerns, um, what, you know, what do you see a need for? And perhaps there's ways we can, you know, staff can address those. Um, we can, Plan Commission can look at targeted areas. Um, or, or do we want to, you know, engage in the full cost of a housing study? Which, you know, which is can be considerable. Um, but first, you know, just a, as a elemental step, incremental step, um, what does council see and what is appetite for? Um, how far does council want to study this?
Thank you, Donovan, and I appreciate, I appreciate you always bringing it back to, um, what, what's at our fingertips today. There's a lot of information out there and it's, um, easy for us to, um, we, we, we see a lot of the information in, you know, comp plan and the various, um, kind of proposals that we're considering. And so it's always good to trickle back on what is known and what is, is what data do we have at our fingertips? And so I, I guess personally, um, one of my, I thought I'll lean heavily into you and Patrick here on making the recommendations on where do you see the gap? Um, recognizing that, um, you know, there's, I don't know what I don't know. And so it's, it's tough for me to say I, you know, I need a study that covers these attributes. Um, one of the things I think is missing from what I've seen recently is yes, we've got some information around our housing stock compared to other communities in Washington County. Um, but, um, I'm, I'm not sure, I'm not sure that goes deeper into mix or also affordability. Um, and so for us to have some comparison of where we are in mix and affordability compared to some of our, um, other, you know, benchmark cities, I would go beyond just Washington County. I would, you know, there's a, there's a little bit of a broader geographic area than the benchmark cities that we always like to benchmark ourselves against. Um, it would be nice to have some better data points on those, along those lines.
Yeah, I, I think there's a couple of things here. I think that, yes, I agree. I think we need to expand our horizons as far as where we compare ourselves to because this is a metro issue more than it is anything else. You know, even though we're not having acre after acre developed right now, eventually it's coming this way and, and we'll have more and more demand. So the question is, is what, what are you hearing from the community? I mean, is it fact or fiction? But obviously you all are hearing something about what the housing stock is. And is that just the multifamily or is it affordability? Or is it price point? Um, I think that, I think that we have to definitely look at what's, what price of housing stock we want. And what will attract new families, what will attract young families? Because that's really the basis of what you want to do. And then how much of that you want and how much multifamily do you want? Whether it's seen, I mean, multifamily can be obviously, as you know, can be senior housing developments. It can be apartment buildings. It can be townhomes and, and all of that. So I, I really think that we have to sit down and Donovan and I will. But I think what we're asking for is what have you heard? What are the concerns that we need to address? Because you are hearing things, obviously if it was mentioned at the council meeting, you're hearing things that we're not hearing. So that's what we really need to know at least to start.
I hear frequently, another apartment building? How can we possibly be supporting all of these apartment buildings? And what happens when the rental market turns? Um, that's a common theme. Um, but I will, I will caveat that by saying, um, those are perceptions that many times are not rooted in fact. And that's why I, you know, I hear it and I appreciate that that's a community perception. But I'm not convinced that that's necessarily the case. And so I'm looking for more data points to help with that. Councilmember Bystrom?
And I would agree with that. I mean, it's, it's perception versus reality and potentially correcting misperceptions around that. But that is the. But that is the perception of, you know, in my opinion, at least in, with my constituency, a large percentage of them. I think the other piece that I hear often is affordable senior housing, affordable, single level slab on grade, you know, detached townhome type units. And I know there's, we're, we're starting to see a little bit more of that pop up, which is great, you know, great news. But I hear that a lot as well. People don't want to go into debt or take on additional debt downsizing. You know, they would love to be able to somehow make a shift from, from their existing single family home to, you know, to something smaller. You know, without having to take out an additional mortgage. So I think those are the two areas, you know, I hear, I hear a lot. And it's, it's not ever, it's, it's not ever one of those kind of not in my backyard arguments or, you know, increased crime or, you know, some of those misperceptions that come along with those multi-unit housing facilities. It's, it's not that, it's just the perception that we have a lot of apartments in this community. And they're seeing more of them going up, down in the headwaters area, you know, the two big units by the, by the Y. And now, you know, now the, the other one going down there, the development on the, right off of 11th there. It is a busy night along Highway 97 with sirens, I'll tell you. So I have my windows open. So, yeah, so it's, it's, it's that perception versus reality piece for me and needing to correct those misperceptions and utilizing the data. And, and what Donovan showed us tonight, I think was really, really helpful. In fact, I'd like a copy of that Donovan, if you can send that out, I'd appreciate it. But I think for me, it's also about that larger vision. We've talked a lot about a kind of our bigger vision for our community and what, what we would like it to be. And housing is certainly a big piece of that. And how does that fit into that larger vision of, of, of what we would like Forest Lake to be? So, so I guess that's my perspective and my, where I'm coming at it from.
Madam Mayor, this is Sam here. I'm one of the guys that kind of brought this up because I, I wanted to see these ratios and that kind of thing. And up until now, I had not seen any kind of a, even a beginning of a housing study here for the city of Forest Lake. It clears up a lot of things and it does help us make those decisions along the way. And of course, that comparison, well, then you have answers for folks that say, where are all these apartment buildings coming from? Also, some of them are perceptions and some are not. But the point is how we, how do we compare other communities? You know, in Washington County, even surrounding communities into an open, so forth. All parts of the metro area. And then how, and what, what, what should that look like as far as my council is concerned? So then that question would be for, for Donovan.
Councilmember Gerard, I think you had your hand up as well.
Donovan, in the comprehensive plan and the housing section, I believe by each zoning district, we have kind of a housing and the ratios of what types of housing would be in each of those areas when we're built out. Can, can you also send that? There's a lot of data there, I know, but it, there's a lot of information on type of housing for each of the districts. And then you line that up with the map and it kind of tells you what's going to go where.
That's, that's correct. I can provide that information.
Thank you. Can you also provide the color map so they know which areas these are going to?
Oh, oh yeah, the, the future land use plan, certainly.
Yes, thank you.
Other comments, input points of what you hear out there and what we'd like to include in a study? One of the things we haven't talked about, but I am always interested in is I think there's, I think there's been some market shift in homeownership or choosing, choosing to rent versus own. And I think there's some shifts that happen in younger demographics. But I also think that there's a shift that's happened in older demographics where maybe people are renting longer and also renting earlier in life than maybe what we saw 20 years ago. And so that currently impacts the mix. And, you know, if there's anything out there that could help us kind of, you know, tenure projections on what that looks like or current trends, I think would also be a helpful data point. Councilmember Bystrom?
Yeah, I think that's really a good point. You know, it's, it's important to really understand that demographic shift. I mean, I, a lot of the data, you know, we studied in our demographic data, we studied when we were doing needs, this community health needs assessments, indicated that we were going to see a steady shift in age until about the year 2035. And are there considerations there that impact our decisions over the course of the next, you know, several years? And once we hit 2035, we were going to shift back again, you know, to, to a younger demographic in the state of Minnesota, anyway. So, you know, just kind of aligning some of that demographic data with decision-making, I think isn't a bad idea either.
And if I could just add a couple of things. It does seem that there's some piece of this that is regional, to echo Administrator Casey's point, that in my conversations with the housing developer, you know, apartment developers, affordability in the metro, in the, you know, the metros are really driving people outward, you know, like they did in other generations. And so that there's a real need for more affordable rental housing. And also, yes, I, I think the, you know, the success of the, you know, Lighthouse Lofts project shows, shows that there is a shift in housing preference and that, I think the long stereotype of the renter being a more transitory person isn't always the, the person who's going to rent and, you know, who doesn't want to make a commitment to owning. And they can afford to buy, but they're choosing not to. And finally, I think also what we're seeing with this, that, that disproportionate number of multiple family units in the last four years is that land currently still is rather cheap in Forest Lake to build these. And we're, as far as single family housing development goes, they're still working through a, a big inventory, a lot of bank-owned land. You know, it's, that was result, you know, in the aftermath of the Great Recession. There's still cheaper land elsewhere for single family homes. And so, you know, there's, things are real regional in, in nature that have produced this, the 76% of housing permits for multiple family in the last few years. And I don't know how much more that demand, you know, Forest Lake will be satisfying. And, but we'll see. And then also, the, you know, I mean, some of this is, you know, there's, I appreciate the ability to provide some more information for, for a council. And in some cases, there is, you know, there's a lot of market questions that, that we can't answer. That's where you get the more technical, you know, consultants who could do that. But also found, because I kind of noodled around with some of the, some, some housing studies, trying to forecast demand. And there's a lot of art to it. Definitely science is there, but it's, you know, it's, it's tough to find the right mix of, of what, you know, what could, what's the future going to hold? And how can the city, you know, approach it, you know, and position, position itself to successfully meet that future?
For sure. Anything else? Patrick, Donovan, you need from council, councilmember Bystrom, go ahead.
Just a, just a question, what is a housing study run?
I think that, that, that depends greatly on the, on the parameters of that housing study. And that's, I think, why we're asking is how we, what we want to study. I mean, you can get into a very long-range housing study that soup to nuts. So we'll have to kind of go back and figure out based on some of our conversations here, whether it's a housing study light, whether it's medium, whether it's big. We just have to kind of, you still have to figure that one out. I, I cannot even begin to tell you what it might cost. Donovan, you may have a better idea of that, but I don't.
I don't, I realized it was going to take a bit of study to understand more, but I mean, I could expect, you know, $40,000, $50,000 would not be a, you know, unreasonable amount.
I'd be interested in seeing what some of those drivers are and maybe seeing, you know, kind of a high level, good, better, best menu of options just to gauge council's appetite for spend. And also what we're getting for incremental spend. I'd encourage bringing some, some of those preliminary numbers back, even if they're in a pretty rough state, just to do a gut check with us. Also recognizing we started this conversation pre-pandemic and we're going to have a lot of budget pressures coming up. And we're going to choose where we're going to make those incremental investments carefully.
We sure will. We'll find, give you scope, scope ranges and what that might cost, we'll probably look at.
And frank, and frankly, if there's an economic, if there is also a reason that now is not the time to do some study. I mean, if there's just economic changes, you, you think about some of those studies that were done pre-Great Recession. You know, there's this economic event that's so monumental that it really makes it, you know, it skews those results. Let's take that into consideration as well. I don't know if that means you push harder on a study or if that means that the data is that much less reliable or predictable. Certainly we're in a situation where, you know, it's tough to see next week, much less make recommendations for a long term.
Yeah, and I, I really agree on, we don't know, I mean, not to keep saying COVID-19, COVID-19, but we don't know how the economy on this is going to bounce back and, and what impacts they're going to be. And what that means when you and I and all of you talk about the budget in September, October, November. We don't know what the state's going to do with shared revenues. We don't know any of that yet. So, you know, there may be things that have to be put on the shelf, but we'll, it's all kind of just up in the air until we figure out what, what the, what the economy, what the world's going to look like in six months from now.
All right. Great discussion. Anything further we need on this particular topic before we move on to staff update? Not seeing any, let's move on to staff updates. We've got kind of a full house this evening, so let's start with Chief Peterson and then we'll move on to Chief Newman, if that makes sense.
Good, Mayor and City Councilmembers, this is Rick Peterson, Chief of Police. Can you hear me?
Hello, man.
Yes, we can.
A little bit more. Well, good evening, I have a few items for you tonight. The police department's call load has slowly increased from 10 to 15 calls for service a day when the stay-at-home order was first mandated by the governor to approximately 25 to 30 calls for service a day now. Historically, we average 50 to 60 calls a day. And I'm assuming the slow increase in calls is due to anxiety and the stresses people are observing with the continued mandate of stay at home. And of course, the slowing, slowly easing of restrictions where we're observing an increase in traffic on our roadways, which I'm sure you've noticed as well. Calls for service regarding potential violations of the governor's executive order to stay at home has decreased. The police department still has the stance of educating our citizens and businesses. And we have had very few complaints of any businesses attempting to open in violation of the executive order. The speed trailer has been out on the city roads for the past couple of weeks now. We are starting to receive a few requests to have the speed trailer set up in certain areas of the city. And once again, please email or call the police department with your requests and we will get you on a waiting list and get the speed trailer out to that location as soon as we can. Lastly, and unfortunately, due to the COVID-19 pandemic, we have had to make the difficult choice of canceling this year's Forest Lake Safety Camp. It was originally scheduled for June 9th and 10th, but due to the commitment and the many logistics that go into planning this event and the unknown future with this pandemic and when it, when it will end, we have decided to cancel the Forest Lake Safety Camp and we've notified our donors, our local newspapers and posted this on our website as well. That's all I have for you, unless you have questions for me.
Thank you, Chief. Any questions?
Yeah, if you don't mind, I have a question, this is Sam. Chief, have you seen an uptick in speeding? I mean, we hear about 100 mile an hour tickets on the freeway and that kind of thing. But I'm, I'm hearing from people about, it seems like the speed is going up all the time. That's the biggest complaint that I hear all the time. The latest one that's off of North Shore Drive. And so have you seen an uptick in that? And have you, have there been more stops for that kind of thing or what's going on there?
Yep, actually there has been an increase in complaints for speeding and also for people running stop signs and stop lights. And I honestly think it has to do with, many people are at home right now, they're not away at businesses. So they're observing cars on their roadways when maybe they haven't. And once again, it's that perception thing that you were talking about where a lot of times people think that cars are speeding. We go out there, we might have the speed trailer, we might sit there stationary in our patrol vehicles and run radar. And we don't observe people, you know, going 10, 15, 20 or 30 miles per hour over the speed limit like we're being told. But if we do catch people, you know, going over the speed limit, we will stop and we'll educate them. And if, if, if a ticket is warranted, we will issue a citation. But I really believe a lot of it is perception. And I'm definitely not saying that, you know, people shouldn't be calling, they should. You just never know when there is somebody that's, that's speeding and how fast they are going. But the, the calls that we've been hearing about as well, and I've also seen it in the media, are the vehicles that are on the interstates and the freeways, highways. And I do know that the call load and traffic citations have increased for the Minnesota State Patrol, I know that.
All right, thanks, because I know they were talking about the increase. I think the, the death rate has even gone up on the freeways. You know, it, given a certain, over this last couple of months compared to a couple, the same couple of months a year ago. And so I just didn't know if that was translating back into the city of Forest Lake or, or not.
Yeah, luckily we have not seen that locally.
Okay, well, thanks, Chief, thanks.
Anything else for Chief Peterson? Thank you, Chief. Chief Newman?
Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. I have updates for fire, building and emergency management. Starting with fire, last Saturday, Forest Lake Fire Department participated in a statewide homemade COVID-19 mask drive between Forest Lake Station 1 and Columbus Fire Station. We collected around 2,000 masks. The mask will be used to support those working and living in congregate living facilities. And I would like to thank those Forest Lake crafters and sewers, as well as Columbus for donating some pretty artistic mask designs. We have been receiving calls and have handed out masks for both nurses and residents in the congregate living facilities. Building update, currently residential commercial plan reviews, reviews are about a week out. And then on Monday, May 4th, the Forest Lake Building Department will start conducting all commercial and residential inspections. Previously, we had used Minspec for the majority of the inspections. And then moving forward, we'll only be using Minspec at the volume of inspections or plan review overwhelms our current staff resulting in service delays. And lastly, emergency management, we are still sitting good on personal protective equipment. We're tracking use daily and replacing as needed. And we are currently working on the FEMA reimbursements due to COVID-19. FEMA will reimburse the city 75% of our costs for unbudgeted expenses as a result of that epidemic. That's all I have, unless you have questions for me.
Chief, where are we on building permit volume, just high levels compared to last year at this time? Are we seeing activity or are we, are we expecting a slower summer or at least? Are we seeing activity or are we, are we expecting a slower summer or at least seeing a slower start to the summer?
Well, our first quarter is equal to the last couple of years, eighteen and nineteen. We are starting though in April to see a slowdown. And we are actually working on a report, which should be done tomorrow, that will provide us kind of a glimpse into where we have been over the last three years and where we are this year. But overall, we are seeing a slowdown and hopefully when things start topping up, I'm hoping that we get an influx of requests and, and plan reviews. But it's still too early to see if this is going to basically result in less permits and less building in Forest Lake.
Very good. Any other questions for Chief Newman? Hearing none. Let's go to Patrick and then let's go Dan after Patrick.
Yeah, just two quick things. First is I would like to congratulate the chief and Cory of the buildings inspector. They've been doing a great job putting that all back together and watching what we're doing. And now that we're going to do that on our own and eliminate Minspec at least for a while, that should help revenues. So I think the performance is going up there. I really appreciate that from both of those, those people. And the only other thing is that we're waiting for the governor's next announcement. We don't know, obviously y'all know it runs out on the fourth. And so we'll see if we're going to have all employees back to work or not back to work, or if we're going to stage them back in or not. It really just depends on what the requirements are and what he says. I'm sure that by Wednesday or Thursday, we'll probably know that and plan accordingly. So if it's a, a full back, then we will bring the employees back and eventually open up City Hall for business. It just, we'll let you know as soon as we figure it out.
Hey, Patrick, can I chime in on, you know, I, I recognize the government, governor's recommendation, but if we are having folks work from home and still able to be effective and if we can have some greater distancing and still allow for some of that work from home, I would encourage us to have a very phased, scaled, safe approach, especially to the extent we found, if you found areas that are working in this current environment, I'd support that. So.
Yeah, I, I agree. And, and I have to praise all staff members on this one. They've done well. They've done great. We really haven't missed much. It's a little cumbersome sometimes, but the work's getting done. The communications are there. You know, people come in once or twice a week if, if they can't do it from home. You know, I'm in a couple of times a week. Brendan's in to do some things. So we kind of are wandering in and out of the building anyways when we can't do something from home. So every single employee is doing a great job with distancing and doing their work from home. And it, it's really been nice to, to not have to worry about, you know, missing up, messing things up or missing things. So I think we've done well as a staff.
That's great. Dan, or any, before we move on to Dan, any other questions for Patrick? Not seeing any. Let's go Dan and then we'll go Peter next.
Mayor, mayor members of council, I have an update. There's been a couple of emails floating around about some airport grant funding as a result of the CARES Act. I have looked into that. I had a conversation last week with Silas, the airport engineer, asking him what's the requirement for being able to apply for those funds. I'm looking at it. You need to be in NPIAS airports to qualify for the CARES Act funding, which Forest Lake Airport is not. So we do not qualify for that additional funding through the CARES Act. However, that act does change the local share if you have a NPIAS funded project. And then as a result of that, there is the possibility that some of the money that MnDOT had earmarked for those projects could go back into the bucket. So I have sent an email to MnDOT just stating that if there's any additional grant funding that Forest Lake would be interested in pursuing that. It is a theoretical long shot though, but I am monitoring that additional grant funding. But wanted council to be aware of that. Unfortunately, since we're not in NPIAS airport, we do not qualify for the additional grant funding that was released as a result of the CARES Act.
Thank you for clarifying that. Dan, any other questions for Dan? Not seeing any. Peter, and then we'll pick up. Is Jamie still on? If Jamie is still on, we'll pick up Jamie. If she is not, we'll go to Karen. Peter?
Your honor, council, I don't have any report for you this evening, but I'd like to take questions if you have any for me.
Any questions for Peter this evening? Not seeing any. Thank you. Jamie, are you on?
I'm here. I don't have any updates. If there's any questions, happy to answer them for you at this time.
Anything else for Jamie this evening? Not seeing any. We'll go Karen and then after Karen, we'll go Ryan.
Um, mayor and council members, I just wanted to go over some of the stuff I mentioned at the last update. The big one was the, the weekly email that I sent out. So I don't know if people heard from the last meeting, but it seems like there was about twenty or so more people that signed up for it. So you just need to go to our website, scroll down to where it says online services, and then you click on the button that says stay connected. You put in your email address and your name and you can get signed up. You need to make sure you push on the subscribed button in order to receive the weekly emails. But those emails contain a lot of good information, a lot of, currently, of course, the COVID information. But then there's other information. The key points right in, in there right now are the senior center, Castlewood Golf Course. There's information all about Castlewood, the compost site that the city has, what its hours are, and a couple of other bits of information. So I just wanted to highlight that again. And then also in that email is the live stream link for all of these meetings that we're holding. So not just for the council meetings, but it's the everything when there's the meetings, if anybody wants to watch those. So that link is also provided within that email. I think that's all the updates that I have.
Thank you. Anything for Karen this evening? All right. We'll go to Ryan and then Donovan after Ryan.
Mayor, city council, just a few updates with the water meter replacement project that you previously awarded. We're kind of just sitting and waiting before obviously the contractor would be entering homes. So with that, we'll execute just, you know, for contract policy, we'll execute a change order that will change the completion date for the contractor, once we know more from what the governor releases here in the future. Also with the local street project, our bids were very favorable. We have been working with Public Works and identifying some additional sections to add to that project that will stay within the allocated budgets. So therefore that we'd be bringing forward a future change order for that project too. But all the funding for that project will stay within what's already been allocated in the CIP. The last bid opening that we have scheduled is May eighth, which is the Steel Co. and Crack Filling Project. So that'll be our last one that we'll have this year. And then just with construction being said, spring load restrictions were moved Monday, April thirteenth. So obviously you're seeing a lot more construction equipment run around town now. And May fourth, the Scandia bituminous plant opens. So it'll become from that direction too, because otherwise they're coming down from St. Paul or Blaine right now, or bituminous roadways in Columbus. So things are really starting to open up on the construction side of things and things are starting to move forward. With that, I'll just open up with any questions.
Any questions for Ryan this evening? Being done. Thank you, Ryan. We will go to Sandy next.
The only thing that I have to add today is we are full force into audit. And so the audit is going fine. I don't anticipate it going any further than what it was originally planned. They were in full force, so nothing changed as far as being able to do the audit in the way that we are. And I think, I think it'll go fine. And unless there's any questions for me, that's all I have.
Any questions for Sandy? All right. Good luck with social distancing audit. I think, I think I've touched our staff for updates. Have I missed anybody?
Um, I could.
Oh, Donovan. Yeah.
Yeah, just a couple of things, few things. Um, yeah, I'll echo what Pat said that I've, I've had to come in a couple of times. Actually this past week, and what drives me is the fence inspections and chicken coop inspections. There is kind of a, a run on domesticated chicken coop keeping. So I've been doing those and processing those with Aaron Reed in building. Also that because the city did complete their comprehensive plan successfully, we're due to get the second part of a thirty-two thousand dollar Met Council grant. So we'll look to be receiving that next month or so. And then also we are moving forward with public hearings at the May thirteenth planning commission meeting. And we'll see, I'm working with Dan on that and also Karen will be a big part of that. And I'm making sure we kind of, you know, pioneer that process. Cause it might, it needs a little more than simply the, the, the kind of written emails, I think, to make sure we, we do incorporate all our, you know, desired public testimony. So more on that later as, as we work through it. Happy taking questions from council.
Thank you for being our technology pioneers on public hearing. Much appreciated. Any other questions for Donovan? All right. Let's move on to council updates. We'll start with council member Husnick and then move to council member Beistrum.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We didn't have anything too new to report except that, the airport funding that Dan was talking about. Dan and I were in that conversation together, just to kind of get it straightened out and get it figured out and all that. And I know he's been working with Silas and all that. So, and he explained it very well. I'm just not going to beat the dead horse here. So that's all I have for you tonight. Thanks.
Very good. Thank you. Council member Beistrum and we'll pick up council member Munson afterwards.
Yeah, I attended the Parks, Trails and Lakes Commission meeting, had a great discussion on the Fenway Agreement. I think we're getting really close to having a finished product there, a little bit more fine tuning that needs to happen. I think that was kind of the biggest piece, other than a lot of the things that we've covered here tonight, arts in the park in particular. I have been keeping in touch with the senior center. I did hear from Sharon that they have made a decision to close through the entire month of May. So Karen and Dan, if we can get the word out on that, that would be great. And they're going to, I'm going to try to get them connected with some folks in public health to have a conversation with them about potentially coming back in June with some limitations if it feels safe to do that. But of course, they're pretty conservative and monitoring things very closely, week by week. Also attended the YMCA meeting. It's, it's interesting. That's a fairly large group and we are certainly doing business in a different way these days. They've really had to pivot, as you all know, their focus with the shutdown, they're focused on childcare, food distribution, senior outreach and their youth intervention services. Just kind of an interesting couple of stats with them. They've connected with nearly fifteen hundred seniors by phone for the second time. It's pretty exhausting work that they're doing, but they are really very intentional about, intentional about staying connected with seniors in the communities that support Forest Lake Y. They're seeing a, a growing need for meals. I, I'm not sure if you're aware or not, but they were doing bag lunches for a while. They added a hot meal option. April fourteenth, for example, six meals were distributed around the Twin Cities area, just, just in a two-hour period of time. So the demand is considerable there. They're also closely monitoring the, the governor's recommendations during consumer behaviors. And of course, health and safety is front and center as the governor relaxes restrictions. So there will be more on that coming. And then I just want to say on a personal note, my husband and I golfed Castlewood on Sunday for the first time this year. And I had an opportunity to meet Zach and boy, oh, boy, have we hit the jackpot. That's all I can say about that. I think it's, it's a great organization to manage. He just said he loves Forest Lake. He said, it's just so fun here. People are so nice. It's such a peaceful course and they are really enjoying themselves here. Speaking of chickens, I've had ongoing communication about roosters. I just wanted to let you know. And that's all I've got.
Thank you, council member Beistrum. And my, my headphones just died. So excuse my mic going through my phone here to the last part of the meeting. Council member Munson?
Yeah, just one update. I attended the FLA, the Athletic Association meeting last week via Zoom. As you can imagine, we have a lot of disappointed youth in our community, as well as disappointed coaches. But I have to give a shout out to Al Howie because he did an amazing job handling a meeting that was disappointing for many, many folks. And he just, he kept it positive. And I just also have to commend him on supporting the safety of our youth in the community. Cause not only does that protect our families, but also our community as a whole. So just really wanted to give a shout out to Al to just, just following the right, the right thing. So thank you, Al.
Excellent. Thank you. And council member Gerard?
I attended the Watershed District meeting last Thursday. There is going to be an increase of curly leaf likely in the Forest Lake area. This is based on what they're seeing in other lakes, a little bit farther south in Minnesota. But in general, it's going to be up and it's just kind of the way spring has happened. So they have budgeted more money to try to get it under control. And then they will be trying part two of the curb removal on Shield Lake this summer. You know, last year they did it first time, didn't go so well. They're hoping for better results this year. They got a little different game plan going. And lastly, they have the agreement to us tonight, which we pulled. So it really was all that was significant at that meeting.
Very good. Thank you. I have just a couple of updates this evening. Had an opportunity to participate with other mayors on a conference call that sponsored by the League of Minnesota Cities with the governor and a couple of members of his staff this last, I believe that call was on Friday. It was a good update. Of course, nobody has a crystal ball. So it's good to hear from him on current plans, as well as some thoughts on local government aid. You know, certainly we have some dependencies on local government aid and there are no immediate, immediate plans for that to be impacted. But certainly we're entering into a time of some economic uncertainty. And so it's a topic on everybody's mind. Also, as you know, this is a bonding year. And so the governor expressed support for a very robust bonding bill and expressed support for a robust bill that, you know, is part of the economic engine and that we should, you know, this is an opportunity for us to keep projects going and keep some of those economic projects moving along. So it was, that was good to hear. Of course, that is a political process and that will, you know, happen here at the, in the legislature over the next month or so and we'll see what, where that ends up. Also notable on the call and weighing heavily on the governor's mind is access to broadband. And so if there was perhaps some opportunity for shifting of priorities as it relates to bonding projects, projects that are impactful to rural broadband and to touch its previous point, we in Forest Lake, we're kind of on the, on the edge of some of those projects. We might see some increased focus on some of those types of projects. But certainly it's impactful as we talk to our schools and also as we just talk to folks just trying to conduct business from home. The EDA had a workshop session this evening and we heard a number of ideas that staff had brought forward on some areas of project interest for the city's EDA. There were a couple of kind of tactical administrative things that we mentioned. Easing enforcement of temporary sign ordinances was an idea that was brought forward. Refunding liquor licenses for some of our bars and restaurants that are no longer having the benefit of those liquor licenses, refunding some of those fees, some of those administrative things that we should be doing as a city. Some of those administrative things that we should be doing as a city, we discussed. But then we also talked about, and Dan has created a template for a virtual downtown. Happy to show council at a future meeting what that virtual downtown might look like. Essentially providing a landing page and a link to social media sites of businesses in the city of Forest Lake. Certainly, there's an immediacy of and a need for a resource like that. But it also has a long-term, a long-term use as well. And so we discussed that topic. We also talked about using LATV and some of their resources and creating some marketing materials around kind of storytelling of some of our businesses that would kind of tell that story, talk about that business, some of the history of that business in Forest Lake. And also how they are addressing the, you know, the current situation. And that would be a great asset both for LATV, they are lacking content right now, as well as a great marketing asset for some of those businesses. So I suspect we will pilot a couple of those videos, gauge kind of what does it take to put them together and then also identify what is a pipeline? How might we offer some of those services to our businesses here in the short term? Any questions or anything else that we should address this evening? Not seeing anything. I think we're ready for a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
We have a motion, we have a motion and a second. Karen, can we get a roll call for adjournment, please?
All right, Councilmember Gerard?
Aye.
Councilmember Husnick?
Aye.
Councilmember Munson?
Aye.
Councilmember Beistrum?
Aye.
Mayor Bane?
Aye. With that, thank you, everybody. We're adjourned.